So we have enough for a form. This is our call meeting for the first reading of the budget. Uh, the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. I'm gonna hit the uh, highlights uh, real quick and then uh, answer any of the questions as we start going uh, through the budget. So uh, after uh, uh, a lot of work and, and review uh, of this twenty-four, twenty-five budget, I had to put in a uh, nine cent property tax increase uh, in this twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Now, if you recall, uh, we was recommended strongly by M T A S, uh, which is some of our advisors that uh, if we're not going up a nickel here, you're kind of getting high date on. Uh, with this increase uh, uh, as we go down through this uh, line item, or at least by department, uh, you'll see uh, where the money is being used. So, keep in mind, uh, nine cents, the penny uh, is uh, uh, is a value of nine thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. That's what the penny actually brings in uh, for the city of Livingston. Again, a penny is nine thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. It is, is what the penny brings in. So uh, uh, so with that said, and certainly you do math, eighty-six thousand three hundred and ten dollars is what the uh, property tax increase uh, will bring in. So, looking at the uh, revenues there on page one, you'll see the uh, the property tax goes up to uh, million eight hundred, eighteen dollars, nine hundred and ten cents there with the revenues. Uh, you'll see uh, just a uh, slight increase uh, on the uh, sales tax as our sales tax kind of continues to uh, hold its own. Uh, you can see uh, where the revenues is for the general fund. Now, keep in mind, this is only the general fund uh, that we were talking about, which is totally different from our water and sewer funds and gas, but we get into that in uh, just a minute. So uh, so there, there's no significant uh, changes uh, in the, the revenues. You'll see the total revenues uh, for the general fund equals five million, four hundred and forty-three thousand eight hundred and ten. So if you flip over on page two, one was the revenues. We go to page two and uh, we will uh, you start talking about uh, the expenditures and what comes out of the expenditures. So you'll see, and, and, and let me say this, in the general fund as well, uh, the employees that are paid out of that. Every employee uh, with the city of Livingston will go to their next uh, increase in pay according to the pay scale. That's every employee, whether it's general fund, water plant, sewer plant, water, uh, glaze fire, will go to the next right now. Uh, so if you look at the expenditures on page two, uh, you can see the salaries, salaries and wages are up about twenty thousand. Uh, and um, most of that is uh, for these salaries. Uh, so you can see the expenditures totals uh, there at the city hall, general government budget, two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. The dues and donations that uh, that uh, we participate in, of course, the chamber of commerce, twenty-one thousand, Tennessee municipal league of current development district, and, and, and it goes on down as you can see uh, what we give back to the committee. Totaling sixty thousand four hundred and twelve dollars. Midway down the page on uh, two, you can see that the uh, uh, as we go on down, there's really not a lot of significant uh, changes uh, that stands out there in the total government, uh, total general government of a million fifty-two. Uh, page three, we go over and we start talking a little bit about public safety. Uh, and in the public safety, uh, again, uh, you can see the increase, nine hundred and seven thousand uh, is what the amended budget was at twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five. We're looking at nine hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars uh, in hourly wages. So uh, again, all our police department uh, will be getting an increase in pay. Also, Chief Smith asked for uh, two squad cars uh, valued at sixty thousand. He also asked for two more personnel on the police department. My numbers just didn't make it uh, just didn't make it happen. You, you, it would have been an additional uh, the, the tax increase uh, with the uh, the general fund. Uh, so you're talking additional eighty thousand dollars. I did not approve that, but we did sit down and have a conversation. Two squad cars at the amount of sixty thousand. As we go down to the fire department, you'll see an increase of salaries uh, again, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand goes to five oh eight uh, and um, Chief Allen asked for uh, so raises uh, of course, for the fire department, raised it around about forty thousand was budgeted. Uh, one new uncertified fireman uh, if uh, at approximately at forty thousand dollars. So that we do now one uncertified fireman in there. Now, if you remember, we had a study uh, with M T A S. M T A S wanted us to get up, I think the number was twelve. Is that right?
That sounds right.
I, I want to say that number was twelve, so we're inching to that. Uh, again, the, the, the issue and uh, obviously everyone knows I'm, I'm gone on um, August thirty-first. Uh, but one of the areas that uh, public safety is really wanna have to focus on is a new building. Uh, a new police and fire department is, is gonna have to happen. Uh, especially if we keep hiring more personnel. Uh, right now, we are, we are making new uh, the auxiliary building that we have got uh, with the, for the police department. If you remember, you authorized us to go and deal with uh, Ms. Patty Cole and her daughter.
Tasha.
Tasha, thank you. Uh, and, and so that has served well, but it's, it's a bad name, folks. At the end of the day, it's, it's, it's a bad name. Uh, you're looking at about uh, twelve to fifteen million dollars on a new public safety building. So that's uh, for the uh, fire department. So you're looking on down at the bottom of page three parts. Didn't ask for a whole lot. Uh, of course, Michael Page Supervisor uh, gonna get a new school board valued at eight thousand and uh, needing a uh, new off-road utility equipment that has a little dump bed in the back uh, where they can haul uh, dirt and uh, whatever the case is for the baseball fields. So no, no changes at the airport. Just no changes other than a uh, more money for raises. Again, every employee will be getting that. Uh, looking at your city streets, you can see the uh, salaries went from three eighty-five to four ten, and that's because of the increase uh, the big expenditure. If you look down there, uh, we have got the big number that is gonna be standing out is two hundred and nine thousand five hundred dollars. The number is so large, uh, or the reason that it is so large, a long armed bush hog uh, is what the street department is needing. And we have got quote that a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars for that one single piece of equipment. That is equipment that we use to clear the city ride lanes. Uh, ours is very, very old uh, and on its last leg according to the department and according to our mechanics. That is in the budget, so I've got that uh, in the budget. In solid waste, uh, if you're going down uh, past the streets, uh, notice the intricate changes there. Uh, hundred and eleven thousand dollars is uh, what uh, we went up to in salaries, but doesn't have no significant uh, changes. Going to the next page or uh, street aid fund, all that uh, Joel will uh, kind of go with that. Your amendment same way for page six as well, uh, which is the home rehab grant fund. If you remember, uh, Matt Maynard, uh, grassroots plan did a uh, home rehab program where it was a grant that paid for a couple of homes here for the citizens here in Livingston. So that's, that's what that is. So it basically the grant runs through our account and that's kind of it. On the, on with the uh, drug fund, talking to Chief Ray Smith. There is a slight increase uh, a little bit, uh, there eight thousand uh, for some uh, the new uh, hopefully cases that were awarded the city some money and fines and forfeits and fees. No real expenditures uh, in the uh, uh, in the drug fund. The industrial fund on page eight. Uh, there's not, not any uh, nothing going on. That is not changed in over a couple of years, so uh, there's really no development time. There's no business in there that has changed. Mr. Joel Parks to my right, the General Debt Services. Go on to page ten, water and sewer funds. Uh, there uh, no uh, increase in any water funds. Uh, I think that we're in good shape and most of the work, uh, I think Greg Davenport will be in here, General Offered Engineering Company will be here uh, in July to talk to us. But if you remember that uh, American Plan Rescue Act, or uh, American Rescue Plan Act, uh, we got a lot of money from that and, and also the county did use theirs and gave it to us, so we will be uh, we are the recipient of that. And so ninety-five percent of that, uh, those grants will be paid for through the uh, US government. So if you remember, we're doing the zone meters out in county to help with our water leakage. We were doing the uh, automatic meter reading, A M R, automatic meter reading in the uh, oh, sorry, in the uh, uh, southern Hillhand, Monroe, Alpine area. That's where uh, that's where our folks said where we needed them. I was in that. It's also gonna have some leak detection in there and go along with the zone meter. So they had a reconstruction meeting um, last week. Uh, I was out town with Vice Mayor Dotson sitting on that. Uh, so we should be kicking that off in about thirty days. Again, Mr. Davenport will be here to uh, talk about that. So, and water and sewer funds, again, raises for all the uh, employees in the water and sewer fund. So in, in the, in the budget, uh, we uh, if you go down to the expenses uh, down to the... This equipment for some reason mine is blank. Phil, is yours blank?
No.
Mine is, is everybody else's?
Hey, Joe.
Page ten?
Okay, that's where I went to.
Uh, page ten, pin and nail your bottom, I don't think. Did I throw you? I know it was supposed to be there, but I didn't see it.
Hundred and thirty-two.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got, yeah.
Okay.
I didn't use your room, you gave me.
I know.
All right, it is a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars uh, for that. And uh, the number above that, I don't know if that is blank, but it's a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Uh, and, and so, we have the option of uh, uh, city employees or depending on the demand, uh, they have the option to get a, a new ditch witch that we need or a new backhoe, but not both. So just remember that, you, you, they can have, in the budget, it's one or the other. Uh, I'm thinking we'll probably go with, with a ditch witch. Uh, all departments use a ditch, ditch witch. Uh, we think we're probably okay in um, uh, in, in the rubber tire backhoe and our uh, track hoes as well. But I went ahead and put the price in there for a, a backhoe, uh, which is about a hundred and five thousand dollars. So along with that, he has asked for a jet vac uh, that we would be using and then uh, inspection of our current uh, water tanks uh, that'd be about fifty-three hundred. Jet vac's gonna be about three thousand dollars. So just keep that in mind uh, that uh, uh, we have that in the budget for either a ditch witch or a rubber tire backhoe. Again, there is no water rate increase. You'll see down at the uh, water plant uh, down toward the bottom of the page. Uh, so we, we normally budget four hundred thousand. We went back down to three hundred thousand just simply for uh, the repairs that have already been done. So we took a hundred thousand dollars off the expenditure uh, that we normally do and, and for the ones that uh, uh, has, we have two seven hundred fifty. Of course, our pumps that are pumping the water nineteen miles to Livingston, so when one of those pumps comes down, so you, you could be spending anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred thousand. We're talking getting cranes down, butlers landed and pulling it out of the intake and, and going from there, so. That's why that number is so high that it will remain. I, I, I don't anticipate that uh, going any lower, but I think we're pretty stable there, three hundred thousand, and hope we don't have to use it. So the water plant employees um, of course, raises across the board there. Uh, he has asked for a uh, hatch pit uh, pH meter, twenty-two hundred dollars. A, some kind of filter, filter uh, for, for a ton, uh, six thousand. So just not really uh, a, a lot, but uh, but I've got it in there what he's asked for. And that, and that jack pair. So going to page eleven. That just continues uh, the uh, expenses there. Total expenses in the water and sewer fund, uh, five million two hundred and twenty-seven uh, thousand and seven hundred uh, for the water and sewer fund. So let me back up just a little bit. I'm gonna skip your wastewater point somehow. Okay, sewer plant. So uh, again, the uh, sewer plant, page eleven, uh, about four down the page. Uh, you can see the uh, where the hourly wages has went up uh, just a little bit. Nothing significant uh, down there in the wish list. So understand that uh, all the supervisors uh, about six weeks ago, I asked them to prepare me a wish list for their departments. And so they um, again, it's a wish list. Uh, and, and I, I, I put it in the budget and in the form of the works, uh, then those are granted after the fiscal year. If not, then they're not. It's really, and they know that kind of going in, so. Uh, but Danny Langford at the wastewater plant uh, has for uh, some exhaust fans, a couple of sinks, uh, tankless toilet, uh, shower kit with handles. Those are important because of the chemicals that they have that you can pull the lever and, and uh, shower yourself off, the chemicals off of you. Some bathroom floor, you know, these buildings are kind of old. If you've not had a chance to go down there, please do. Uh, some wall paint, uh, so that's, that's kind of what we have got down there. Re- replacing parts, uh, the total uh, is uh, for about estimated fourteen thousand dollars uh, for the total amount at the wastewater plant. Going to page twelve. So natural gas. Uh, is our natural gas, the revenues, they went up just a little, uh, there, where there is a slight adjustment in the gas bills where uh, we have not uh, had an increase in natural gas since twenty eighteen. Uh, we, there is gonna be just a little increase on how we figure that. The average uh, home uh, what we have looked at is gonna be an additional ten dollars a month uh, for their gas bill. Uh, so that is gonna bring in a little extra money to the gas fund. Again, we have not had an increase since twenty eighteen. Gas department supervisor wishlist is uh, two uh, mechanical leak detectors at six thousand eight hundred and forty dollars, uh, manual calibration kit at eleven seventy-two, upgrade station number one. This is the big, so if you go down there and you look under equipment, uh, you can see uh, we're up there about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's significant of what we done, here's why. Uh, they're gonna have to upgrade station one. Station one, which is located right at the, over to the Duncan County line on highway forty-two. That's gonna be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We put that off as much as we possibly can. There's where your increases came in just a little to help pay for station one getting upgraded. That is the main line that comes to Livingston. So uh, according to Steve Jolly, we have, this is something we can no longer put off. It's got to be done. So that, there's your increase there. Uh, and again, like I said, two mechanical leak detectors, six thousand eight hundred and forty dollars, manual calibration kit, eleven seventy-two, and then the upgrade station uh, number one, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, okay? And uh, Joel, I'm going, uh, I'm, I'm finished with my part. I'll be right back in a minute, but Joel, you got time to go over this on here. Does anybody have any questions?
I have just a couple.
Okay.
On page one, just about a quarter of the way down, courthouse square, that big four eighty. That just a grant for the improvements on the courthouse square? The four eighty, that wasn't a line item at all in the previous year? You see where I'm talking about?
Courthouse square, gotcha. Four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I, I, if I'm not mistaken, Phil, that's just a grant that we give coming in.
Okay, that's what I said.
And it's just a grant.
I assumed that, but then, and then all the other questions?
I wish it wasn't, but I wish that was additional.
On page two.
All right.
Halfway down, the payroll and employee insurance look like they've gone down significantly from last year, and I'm just wondering how that's possible. Tickle that it is, but all the rest of them.
Okay. Anything more to address that?
Good to hear.
Any others? All right. Turn it over to you, Mr. Joel.
Very quickly, you'll notice that the twenty-three, twenty-four budget or, or check column is blank. It's never been blank before. We've got a lot of work to do this summer to uh, get some good numbers in there. I'll be working on that quite good this summer and the next week or so, actually. So that'll give us a good uh, good position. Good information to understand. Okay, so just a couple of highlights right away on what you're talking about. Uh, the new software has come in and there's been some trouble with it. That's really impacting, one of you don't have the protective numbers yet. Uh, part of that problem has been um, one of the problems from there is the change, the people that put this software out have it in many, many counties and cities. So they want to do the, split the taxes per department or traditionally in the past years, we've always put it under the general government. So we're starting to split that up. So if you looked at line item, let's see, which line item was it?
Uh, it's on page two, about halfway down under other general government payroll tax and employee insurance.
Yes, now, now each department has a payroll tax line. So that line item is uh, reduced and only reflects the general government. So you'll see that line item under uh, public safety, public fire and uh, police and then throughout this whole page. Like in fact, in water and sewer, it used to be under one line item, now it's under three, water department and sewer and sanitation, uh, water department. The mayor has done a very good job explaining the budget, like, cause I'm mostly here for the questions. Well, I also wanted to go over the uh, debt service. Those are all numbers that uh, just come from the uh, no requirements, common requirements of the future. They say that you no longer have any more payments after this year toward the park. That's gonna free you from a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars that was in last year's budget. And you got the one payment for this year twenty-four, twenty-five, that's away. So that's gonna be pretty instrumental piece if you're looking to fund that public safety. That's gonna be a piece of that. What other questions do you have?
Joel, I'm sure you've had a payment in the budget for several years and probably know it back from the board.
I do, I did a good review on it. He did a good job and I just pointed out, put something in his book, looked at it. I'm not sure about it, so we'll look. So, so we fixed a few things before coming in here uh, earlier in the second year.
I'm sure we gave you a blessing, all right?
You do have a blessing and I also bless, have blessing on tax increase nine cents. The money is pretty good, but they, every dollar has a label and some things are just gonna come up that you don't expect.
So not to, not to, thank you, Joel, not to have it down, but you got in front of you there with the uh, current tax rates, uh, dollar seventy-one going to a dollar eight. You can see the property bay and the assessed value on how much uh, that it goes up. Uh, and one of the columns there, fifty thousand, uh, we're talking about twelve bumps, thirteen. Uh, I won't read it all to you, you can see it right there in front of you, so um, but you have it in front of you. But you have it in front of you. And if you don't have any questions, any further questions, we will be meeting on, that date has changed for the second reading, my apologies, this is my call. On the twenty-eighth at five, twenty-eighth at five.
What day is that?
It's Friday. Yeah.
I also had a quick question. This may be ridiculous or silly. Why isn't their tax rate carried out to four decimal places? Could we not just simplify that now and get just?
I, I can't answer that yet. So when, of course, we come up with tax rate, the tax assessor comes back with some numbers, exactly what the penny comes in. So we just use that formula, and that's, that's it.
I mean, it's really impressive the way it looks.
Keep it simple.
We know exactly what we need.
Yeah, so the second reading, Joel, go over the projected numbers and also the.
Budget amendments?
Budget amendments, yeah, the budget amendments. So, but that's where we are. If there is no questions, entertain a motion to pass this budget on the first reading.
Is this an open meeting?
It's a call meeting, so.
It's not?
No, it's not.
Do you want me to accept the budget?
Motion by Alderman Rexdale. Is there a second?
I'll make a second.
Second by Alderman Bruce Fowler. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Fuss.
Alderman Eldon?
Yes.
Alderman Ray?
Yes.
Osprey Abasi?
Yes.
Alderman Linder?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to pass.
Motion to pass. Even though this is a call meeting, if you have a question, I will there back that. That's normally how we do a call meeting, so.
You have a question?
Thank you. It's just that ninety thousand dollars that Vice Mayor Dodson brought up, that's, everything's going down. I would expect somewhere that some numbers are going bigger to make up for that.
Yeah.
Can you show me where at least one of those is? Where would I see that money coming back in? The ninety thousand dollars I'm talking about is in the center of page two.
Right.
Where it says, other general government payroll tax goes from one sixty-six to ninety. So I'm looking for seventy grand somewhere.
In essence, yes. So if you look at the next page, at the fire department, that's personally what I looked at. OASI, so there was no provision for that last year. So that's where we're picking up the expense. We're simply just moving the expense from a central category to more of a department based, which line item.
So OASI?
On page three.
Yes, OASI is the same.
That is federal tax, yes. And you'll see that health, hospital and health insurance also is split up by direct department now. You'll see that in the police department, street department.
Okay, so those numbers, it was only an issue because I didn't consider that as a second.
Yes.
Very good, thank you very much.
All right, so we will meet again, a public hearing. The budget we put in the paper, that's normally served when you have your questions, when we have a public hearing. If you bring your questions in for a public hearing, but I went ahead and allowed you to speak. So I didn't want you to think I was just being rude. Cut me off, but there is a process, okay?
That's what I'm going to ask.
I went ahead and did that. All right, so the motion is second. The budget is passed on the first reading. I will see you again, if not soon, on June the twenty-eighth at five o'clock for the reading on the second budget. Also mark in your calendars, due the Fourth of July, being on a Thursday. We normally meet on a Monday. I know there's going to be vacations and folks off that week. So our city council regular meeting will be on July eighth, July eighth. The motion to adjourn.
The move.
What you made about Vice Mayor Ken Dodson, second by Alderman Bruce Siller, any discussion? All four of the books will let go of saying aye. I'll close by sideboard, adjourn.